This time I'll call the June meeting of the Haywood County Board of Education to order. This time I'd like to ask Mr. Jimmy Rogers if he would lead us in our board prayer. Please, board members, please rise.
Let us pray. Congress, Heavenly Father, again, we want to say thank you. Thank you for the many blessings you bestowed upon us. Thank you, Lord, for the opportunities that we've had this year in public education in Haywood County schools. Had a tremendous year, Lord, a great year, successful year. Lord, we thank you for keeping our students safe, helping them learn to the best of their abilities. Thank you for the parents and the communities. Thank you, Lord, for our citizens. Thank you for our teachers. Thank you for our staff that's helped lead this school system to be one of the best it can be. And, Lord, I do pray now as this board continues to make decisions for the betterment of education, and also to applaud for the accomplishments that we've seen happen within our schools. We pray your guidance upon our decisions that will help us continue to help make Haywood County schools the best in this state. God directs us in all that we do, and we give you the praise and glory for it all. Amen.
Please join me in your pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Our next board meeting will be held here, June the 24th, Monday, June the 24th, here at the Education Center. It's a summer schedule, and we also will have, go ahead and announce, we're going to have some summer board meetings with the urgency of hiring folks in our system. We try to accommodate that as much as possible. We'll have a meeting July 22nd at 7:00 PM and August the 5th at 7:00 PM. We've had a lot of graduations. I'd like to congratulate all of our graduates. It was a busy weekend, but it was well worth the attendance that's going. It was well attended and well organized, and it was a great celebration. We've got one left tomorrow night, Haywood Community Learning Center, tomorrow night at 6:30 at the HCC auditorium. So if you can make it, to congratulate these young scholars, I'd appreciate your attendance. Are there any other announcements that need to be made? Or anybody needs to make or wants to make? Okay. Under agenda adjustments, did we have anyone that needs to add something? I've been made aware that there might be some items that need to come before the board. Okay, building grounds, we'll add an item, what's to do it? Right after the policies, right after item 18, we'll add building and grounds has one item. Is there any objection to this addition to the agenda at this time? There being none, we'll add that without objection. Is there any other things that need to come out of finance that you're aware of? Just already on the agenda? Okay, good deal. Tonight, we're starting to follow our policy, our new policy, so we'll, at this time, ask for a motion to approve the June 10th board agenda.
At this time, I'll make a motion to approve the June 10th agenda.
Okay, Mr. Francis has made the motion.
Second.
Second, Mr. Rogers. Any questions or discussion on a motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and now the board agenda is approved. Next on our agenda, we have Dr. Trevor Putnam. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, with great pleasure, I'd like to introduce the Sportsman Club for Bethel Middle School, Mr. David Franklin, for some special recognition.
Chad Franklin.
The older we get, the more, excuse me, the older we get, the more we look like each other, so it just goes hand in hand. We just answer and go on, don't say nothing bad. Ladies and gentlemen, first of all, I want to thank you for your continued support of our program. I know David was here last meeting, and we chose to come here because we knew it was going to be crowded, and we didn't want to stand around half the night and wait. So, but, again, Dr. Nolte, you know, everybody who supports us from Central Office, Jeanie Wood, everybody, you know, thank you for what you do for our program. Just to let you know, little tidbit of information, we have probably brought this year in District Nine, I say District Nine, Polk County West, around $350,000 worth of scholarships to these kids. Now, that includes Pisgah, Murphy, that way. So, you know, colleges are starting to look, and we're starting to see some programs, so, you know, thanks again. It's not just us shooting, it's something, you know, these kids can build a future home. So, thank you. First of all, the coaches, Trey Franklin has helped. Evan Collins, Jody Schuford, where at, Jody? Brian didn't make it, good Brian couldn't make it tonight, Brian Glance couldn't make it. Had extremely busy year at work, without these four or five gentlemen, it wouldn't happen. We have, by far, had the most successful year we've ever had at Bethel. We tied, we're the best finished District Nines ever had overall, high school, overall middle school, with a third overall at state. So, our area competitions, we completely just mopped the floor with everybody. So, we had a great year. Real special group of kids, and a lot of talent, and losing a lot of them to Pisgah next year, so Pisgah's going to be really, really stout next year. We're excited to see what they can do. We finished third in archery, I'm doing this from memory because all my notes are actually on my desk. Finished third overall team at state, third archery, and third in rifle. Tied for third in shotgun, and lost on the tiebreaker. District Nine competition, was first team overall, first archery team, first rifle team, second orienteering, and second shotgun. So, very successful year, and we had some individuals at District Nine, I'll name them as I call them up. First one I want to represent, or I want to call out is not, I don't have a card for him, he didn't make any of the teams. But that just goes to show how strong our team was this year. We had, I shot 12 kids, and Armando didn't make, Armon, Armando didn't make any of the teams. But he's incredibly talented, and probably would have made any team in the state, probably in archery and orienteering. But we were just so strong, and that was one of the reasons why we were strong, because we had kids in the background pushing the kids that didn't make the team. So, Armando, if you'll come on up. Armando Basalto. Naomi Goodwin. Naomi was on archery team, orienteering team, and 22 team, right? Natalie Schuford. Natalie was on 22 team. Christian Basalto. Christian was on the orienteering team, and was our backup in archery, and was the District Nine orienteering first place champion. One name's on your card, Christian. Okay. Two of them there. Bryson Robinson, Bryson here? Bryson didn't make it. Bryson was on our shotgun team, and he was District Nine individual champion in shotgun. Landon Stockton. Landon was on shotgun team. Trevor Watson. Trevor was on shotgun and archery. Nick Reinhardt. Nick was on orienteering and 22 team. Kyler Franklin. Kyler was on, Kyler was on the archery team. Jake Hansen. Jake done all four, he was on orienteering, shotgun, 22, and archery, and was, what'd you finish in District, third overall? Third overall, I think, in District. Grady Glance. Grady participated in all four disciplines as well, and you finished second, or second or third overall, he was close. It was, him and Jake were right there, close together. Grady finished first in rifle. That it? Ms. Paris, can't say enough about her. I know there's a bunch of other principals in here, but she's the best in Haywood County if you ask me. Super supportive, and, you know, thank you for what you do. We've not, I think in six years, we've made state five, and I think she's missed two or three competitions, period. And that's all the locals and everything, so Ms. Paris, thank you. Special group of eighth graders, and I'm going to miss them. I think they're all special, but this group is going to do something impressive at Pisgah. Thank you.
Moms, dads, if y'all want to come around, get a picture. I'll get out of the way, I promise.
You can stand up on each side and shine your head.
Turn it into a camera.
That could be the backdrop. Yeah, he's a little shiny right there.
Sometimes I'll see it in the paper, and you'll see a set back, this barely catches any of those pictures.
Good job, guys.
Good job.
We'll give those folks a little opportunity to go ahead and head out unless they want to stay for the whole meeting.
There's no homework tonight.
But there is a race on. Those are NASCAR guys right there. Next we have on our agenda Ms. Jill Barker, and she's getting everybody in here, so.
Chairman Francis and members of the board, I just wanted you to see our aspiring administrators, our first class. I'm so proud of them, I call them my kids. So even though I didn't have a classroom, they're my kids. Y'all didn't know you were called that till last time, but I'm so proud of them, I want you to look at them. But, you know, at the beginning of the year, the first thing Dr. Nolte asked me to do, he said, Jill, I want you to have a program for people that want to be principals, and I want you to really show them what it's like, be practical, go over the standards with them for principals, how they're evaluated. And so, that's what happened. They're honored to be selected by their principals, to even come to this. So, we told the principals, really think long and hard about it, please nominate some people that you think will participate, be good, and show up, and they did. They came to every meeting, we met seven times, and they were there, they had the best questions. We did all kinds of things. Angie Gardner came and talked to them about federal and state monies and allotments. We went to the bus garage, and Mark Shepherd, and Allison Francis, and Joe Buchanan turned them around, and Joe did all the talking. Not Mark, it was shocking. But he did a great job, and they didn't know Mark usually did the talking, but, and Mark was impressed too. That was an awesome experience. We took them to our two Blue Ribbon Schools one day, to Haywood Early College in Riverbend. They got to interview the principals, the principals talked and visit the classrooms. Dr. Putnam talked to them about human resource leadership at our last meeting, and Dr. Bill and I talked to them every single time, just about all the standards, and we did activities with them. One day, we gave them an envelope, and we had all these things that happen in the day of life of a principal, and we made them put them in order of which one you'd do first. And so, they had to get in little groups, and, you know, the phones ringing, the superintendent's called, I said, always call the superintendent back first. You know, the toilets were overflowing, and so that was really fun. We gave them a lot of different scenarios, and I'll let them talk about some things they thought. We did one digital, I think Clint Connor was the one that said, these sessions need to be varied, have them at different times, they coach, they've got kids. We did one early in the morning, we did one via internet, video conferencing. Matt Bracewell had the best radio voice. He had the best voice. So, anyway, we had a good time, and I'm glad y'all were my kids. So, I wanted the principalship to come to life for them and make it applicable, and I hope that's something that we accomplished. I'm proud of you, y'all have done a great job, and I think the future looks really bright for Haywood County schools. So, I'm going to recognize you at this time, so come up if you want to say something. A time is a good opportunity, right, to talk to the Board of Education? So, I don't know if they will or not, but here we go. Okay, you want to help me, right? Matt Bracewell. Also have a gift from the Haywood County Schools Foundation. Thank you, Jeanie Wood and her foundation. Appreciate it. Matt, you want to say anything?
I do.
Okay, oh, good.
I'd like to explain why I overdressed. You have no idea how close I was to not walking in this place when I see people wearing ties, but we got caught in the Asheville traffic, go figure, taking the kids to go see a movie. So anyways, know your time's valuable. Thank you so much for this opportunity, I really appreciate it. Mr. Trantham, thank you so much, I appreciate your leadership. I think one of the most beneficial experiences for me was getting a chance to sit in the room with Mr. Trantham, as he devoted his time, when I know he's got a lot of things to do. I really appreciate his guidance at Tuscola, appreciate his nuggets of wisdom, it was very helpful. But I thank everyone for the opportunity, the experience of the Early College, and to, you know, the Blue Ribbon Schools, that was amazing. It really just recharged me, after spending many years in teaching and not wanting to pursue administration, as I had gone on into it early in my career, it really gave me a passion to reconsider that, so thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, Emily Farmer. She's a great lead teacher. My daughter at Bethel Middle says she's going to be the best principal, she's. Travis Green. Erin Horton. Maggie King.
I just wanted to say thank you. Ms. Jill Chambers nominated me, and through several conversations, just really encouraged me to give this a try. She has encouraged me to do a lot, and I'm just very thankful for you, for this opportunity, and for you gentlemen, for the counsel that you've invested in us. Thank you.
Laura Kirchner. Mary Mason.
I just would like to say that for years, I've been on the fence whether this was really something I wanted to pursue or not, and this experience has really made me decide that, yes, this is definitely a route that I want to go. So, thank you to Jill and everyone who's been a part of it, and to also my administration for really saying, let's do this, you need to, you need to do this. So, thank you so much.
Aren't they good? All right, good group. Okay, Brittany Plas. I hired Brittany, too. Baron Rogers. Doesn't he look nice? I think he's going to try to get a job tonight.
I'll use my bad posture and bend over into this. I would like to say that, you know, this program, one of the most beneficial things from this program, probably for me, and I'm sure for everybody else, I was in grad school for two years, learning this stuff, and I probably learned more applicable, real world stuff in this academy than I did in the whole time I was taking graduate courses. So, you know, any of you administrators that have people that you think would be good for this, I would totally recommend it, because it's really going to get them ready. I'd also like to thank Mr. Trantham for recommending me for this, and being a great leader. Also, Dr. Putnam, Dr. Nolte, Jill Barker, I mean, just everybody that helped us out, everybody that led us into their schools, their jobs, you know, from transportation to food services, everything, it's just been great, and everybody was really welcoming and really helpful, so thank you.
Thank you. Rhonda Rogers. Amanda Wells. Never seen Amanda with a loss of work. Carly Wells.
I just want to say that I've sat through lots of online classes for this degree, and I know that as a teacher, you sit and you observe all your administrators, and it just, just like Baron said, it does not prepare you, and this program did exactly that. It got us into real life experiences, we got to meet people and talk people, so I appreciate Mr. Burnett for giving me this opportunity, and I appreciate Dr. Nolte for advising us to start this, and Ms. Jill Barker, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's hard, for carrying on this program and letting us come and experience these things, because it really was a rewarding experience.
Are y'all not proud of them? I'm so proud. It was a great experience for me, I learned more from y'all, and thank you, you made me feel so good about the future of our school system, and I remember being where you were and somebody believing in me, and I know the power of that, so I want you to pass that on one day. And I've loved getting to know y'all, okay? So, thank you, congratulations, thank you to Haywood County Schools Foundation. So, come up, let's get your picture. Chairman Francis, members of the board, Dr. Nolte, Dr. Putnam, and Jill, it is my honor tonight to recognize our 2018-19 retirees. As they sign their paperwork throughout the year, we always give them an appreciation gift, but we want to take this opportunity tonight to publicly thank them for their dedication and their commitment and their time in Haywood County schools. So, if I, as I call your name, if you're here, if you'll just come up and get your certificate. Kathy Aqua Viva. John Best. Susan Breeze. Jackie Cole. They've earned it. Ermin DeLisandro. Jan Ditten. Sharon Irwin Smart. Pamela Fox. Sherry Hill. Karen Kreutzberg. Deborah Massey. Lorraine Morris. Ron Moss. Deborah Presley. Diane Williamson. And Priscilla Wilson. And Renee White. Again, we just want to thank our.
I just want to say, Ron Moss has texted me no less than three times and apologized for not being here. Finally, I told him, I'll call you after the meeting. That's a true story.
No one's surprised. Again, we just want to thank you all and all of our retirees for all you've done for the school system over the past years. We congratulate you and wish you well in your retirement.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Nolte, and Dr. Putnam, Ms. Barker, guests, this is an awesome night of recognitions, and I'm glad I get to take part in it twice. It is such a fortunate thing for us to be able to recognize employees, recognize teachers and children for doing great. and children for doing great things, and it's always fun to get to do that. Tonight, I want to recognize one employee first for excellent service, and Margaret, come on in here. Margaret had no idea why she was here tonight. I've been telling her all week, "Well, we're recognizing some teachers. I need you to be there." Margaret is, as most of you know, is an assistant in the HR department, and she does the onboarding. And Margaret's in charge of making us all look good, right? When you get hired, when the principal says, "I'm offering you the job," Margaret's the first one they talk to, am I right? All y'all's been hired here in the last three years. And if you don't get your stuff to Margaret, you don't get hired. I mean, it's just that simple, right? Now, she makes us look good, and on a daily basis, Margaret walks in my office, and when I hear these three words, I know I'm gonna have to make a hard decision. She'll walk in just almost every day and say, "Why are we..." And then she'll follow with some question, "Why are we doing this this way?" And so, that means I get to make a hard decision, all right? We're either gonna change it, or we're gonna leave it the same, but it's gonna get better one way or another. She touches each employee with a background check, with a drug test, with a health certificate. They get pretty intimate. She knows more about some employees than their spouse. She does the payroll paperwork for them. She supports them in onboarding. The only thing she will not tell them how to do is fill out their tax paperwork, and we've told her, "You just can't do that." That's up to some financial guru. She's been instrumental in implementing SubFender for our teachers to help find subs when they don't feel good or when their children don't feel good. She's been instrumental in implementing Teacher Match, working with people directly at the company to make sure that our hiring and onboarding systems work, our online record system, our coaching contract system. She has been instrumental in all these things. And just the other day, she was working with the Background Information Bureau, who does our background checks on all of our employees, and she was questioning them on why we have such wide swings and what it costs. And through conversations with them, she was able to find out and implement a plan for us where each background check would only cost $19.45. In the past, it had varied anywhere from $7 to $800, depending on where you lived and how many names you had. I thought that was pretty special. So, I had her go back and figure over the last three years, how much money would we have saved if we'd had this plan three years ago? And it turns out, it would be somewhere a little over $5,000 a year savings by doing it this way. And so, I wanted to recognize Margaret tonight for continual service in this way of finding better ways to do things and cheaper ways and being a good steward. So, in her certificate, it says, "The Certificate of Recognition is a word of Margaret Rogers in recognition of excellent service to the employees, students, and families of Haywood County Schools. Employees like you inspire us to be helpful and good stewards of district resources." Dr. Putnam said she's a great proofreader, too, so. Picture. Yeah, picture. The second cool thing I get to do tonight is recognize some of our beginning teachers. Each year, we have about somewhere between 40 and 50 beginning teachers who replace our retirees and try to do as well as they did, and most often, they do. The first thing I want to do, though, is ask all the principals in the room, if you'll stand up, stand up, principals, please, raise your hand. Let everybody see who you are. Everybody's up here tonight. What I want to recognize them for is if principals did not do an excellent job in hiring and pulling people in that are excellent employees, that are excellent teachers, excellent clerical people, custodians and so forth, bus drivers, the whole thing, we wouldn't get to do as much of this recognition. And so, they do a really good job, and as an HR director, sometimes we disagree on who has a license and who don't and that sort of thing, but we never disagree that they're trying to get the best person in the building. And it's an awesome thing to get to work with them to do that. So, every time that you see an employee being recognized for something, some excellent work, always think, "Who's the one that brought them in the building?" Because that's a cool thing. Our beginning teachers have a very difficult job, as you would know. The first year of teaching is a difficult thing. There are very few other professions where you're expected to organize, train, and lead 20 to 150 people who may or may not be able to tie their shoes, who may or may not be able to open their milk for themselves, who may have never been away from their mom or dad or their guardian for more than a few hours at a time, all on the first day. And they have to do that with fidelity, and they have to do it as caring people, and they have to make sure that we take good care of those children. Sometimes, as a beginning teacher, you want to go home and look through the want ads. That passes fairly quickly, thankfully, but you do. I remember that when I was my first year teaching. I'd go home and say, "Man, I spent a lot of money on this degree, but I'm gonna look in the want ads today." But it always passed the next morning when I saw the kids again. They have a lot of different people to please. They have university supervisors. They have principals. They have liaisons. They have mentors. They have lead teachers. They have a bunch of parents. They have superintendents, and they have school board members, and the list goes on and on of who they need to please. Luckily, this year, the North Carolina Center for the Advancement of Teaching, NCAT, there's two of them in the state, one here in western North Carolina and one down near the beach, the one here has started a new program, the First Annual Beginning Teacher of the Year Program. And I have to give the credit to Ms. Chadwick. She came to me earlier in the year, and she said, "They are starting a really cool program, and I think we ought to participate." And I said, "Yeah, let's do it. That's really cool." The state winner for Beginning Teacher of the Year will receive a $5,000 check. So, tonight, we're going to recognize a beginning teacher from the elementary, middle school, and high school level, and then we're going to nominate one of them to go on toward the state level to try to get the $5,000 and be recognized as the state Beginning Teacher of the Year. So, first up, I would like to recognize Emily Ray. Emily, come on up here. Hang out here with Dr. Putnam. He needs a friend. Hold on. So, Emily is our Elementary Teacher of the Year this year. She teaches at Meadowbrook Elementary School, and I'm gonna read to you what her principal had to say about her. "Emily is a natural leader and teacher. Each time I go into her classroom, I am impressed by the classroom climate and community. She has instilled a love for learning in all of her students regardless of their background and academic level. Emily's enthusiasm and positivity rubs off on all those who are around her. She loves working with children, is an excellent role model for the students at Meadowbrook. Emily displays so many professional and personal qualities that I often forget that she's a first-year teacher. She shows initiative and completes all of her professional duties in a responsible, professional, and efficient manner. She's not only excelled at her first year in the classroom, but is also pursuing a master's degree." Emily? Got these out of order. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, just hang out, and we'll get a picture here in a minute. All right, Alex, come on up. They turned in her name, Alex McClure, and I was like, "Who is that?" You too. Still knew, yeah. Alex is our middle school Beginning Teacher of the Year, and I want to read to you something that one of her students wrote about her. She said, "The word I would use for Ms. Swanger is encouraging. She encourages me to keep trying my best. She tells us how if we try our best. She is proud no matter what. She is definitely one of my favorite teachers ever, and I couldn't tell she was a first-year teacher." You noticing a pattern here? They all say that. Couldn't tell they were a first-year teacher. Even the students are saying that. "Ms. Swanger is always happy and makes us more engaged in the problems. She makes it fun to go to math." That's a superpower right there. "She makes it fun to go to math, and I'm always excited to go to her class because of the mood she sets there. I am so honored that I got the opportunity to be in her class and that I got to know her personally. I couldn't think of anyone more deserving than her." Congratulations. Isn't this fun? I was tearing up myself, brother. I was sitting in my office the other day reading these packets, you know, "Oh, my gosh." Yeah, Huggins, yeah. The next one, our high school Beginning Teacher of the Year is Kelsey Pinkston. Kelsey? I want to read to you what a fellow teacher at Pisgah said about Kelsey. "As a veteran teacher of 20 years and having won Teacher of the Year twice, myself, for my respective schools, it has been a great privilege to have the breath of fresh air that Kelsey brings to the classroom to inspire me in my own career." This is a two-time Teacher of the Year herself saying this. "Her creativity and drive to challenge herself, to try new things, and to reach all of her students was a huge asset, not only to our students, but also to me. I feel very blessed to have gotten to work with her this year and look forward to working with her again next year, team teaching. Haywood County has gained a huge asset with getting Kelsey Pinkston to come back to her alma to teach." Congratulations. Now, the one everybody's been waiting for. Who's gonna go on to the state to try to get the $5,000 and the great state recognition Beginning Teacher of the Year? This was a very difficult decision. I think I'm the only person on the planet right this minute that knows, but we wish we could recognize all of our Beginning Teachers of the Year like this because they've all done a fantastic job, but someone has to stand above and go represent Haywood County, and we think that Kelsey Pinkston will do a good job with it. Pictures, pictures. We would like for the Beginning Teacher Liaisons, they would like to change their name and be called Coaches. So, we want the Coaches to come up here and stand with them. These ladies here are an integral part in making sure. Yeah, Ms. Chadwick, who coordinates this for us, Ms. Pryor, who does middle school, Ms. Cabe, who does elementary, and Ms. Clary, who does the high school. So, we want to thank them for helping our Beginning Teachers as well. Oh, and Ms. Sees, I'm sorry. You were hiding. All right, scrunch it in, smile real big. All right, congratulations. One more picture, one more picture. Thank you. Thank you, ladies. Thank you, board members. I appreciate it. Congratulations to all our recipients tonight on their awards, and again, job well done, and congratulations. We have had someone sign up to address the board tonight under our open session, and now's the time period designated by the Board of Education for public comments. This time is set aside for comments from the general public in regard to matters of concern to the public. However, comments addressing specific students and/or personnel are prohibited due to confidentiality laws and regulations. Comments are limited to three minutes. The board requests that all speakers adhere to the time limitation and prohibition against mentioning individual students and personnel. We've had a good friend of mine sign up this evening, Mr. Don Smart. Don, you've got three minutes to tell what's on your mind tonight.
They won't take me long. I'll add a few words. I'd like to address Mr. Francis and the school board and Dr. Nolte. I'd like to first of all say, I'm Don Smart. I'm a full-time farmer here in the county and president of Haywood County Farm Bureau. I've been here several times over the years, and I'd like to thank this board for your support of agriculture programs in the school. I've been a strong advocate of vocational education, Dr. Nolte, all the years. I was a strong advocate of vocational education back when it wasn't too popular. And this morning, the news made me happy. Turned TV on, and it said that this nation was in debt over a trillion dollars in college loans wasn't paid back. A trillion dollars wasn't paid back. And the point of the reporter's story was, maybe we don't need to be all going to college. Maybe we need to do some of this vocational T and I training. And I'm glad our school system here has kept a strong vocational program. My favorite was Ag education, and it was called to my attention here shortly. We've had great Ag education programs in this county, the two high schools, Pisgah and Tuscola, excellent teachers, excellent programs. The two of the teachers at Tuscola, one retarded and one, I think, decided to make a career change. So, at this time, they may have been replaced and they may have not. I don't know. But the agriculture community would like to request that the school system replace these two jobs at the current 12 months' employments they're at. There are no good Ag teachers. They're scarce as ante, Dr. Nolte. They're hard to find. There's a lot of people out there wanting a job, but there's few people out there that are really dedicated that wants to put time in it. And the two teachers at Tuscola run a great program, and it takes a lot of time training teams. This past year, they won the state soil judging contest and went to Oklahoma City. And they've always took the kids to the national convention, the biggest convention in the world of youth, 60,000. We've always made a strong presence, and we in the agriculture community'd like to keep that going. Agriculture is important. It's our largest industry, and it employs one to two people out of 10. There's great careers out there in the industry, and these people trained in it. So, I hope this board will address this issue and give us two good So I hope this board will address this issue and give us two good teachers. Thank you much for your support and what you do.
Thank you, Mr. Smart, and I think Dr. Nolte wanted to say something.
I'd just say that we certainly concur. Uh, I know Mr. Best's position has been advertised, I haven't checked to see if the other one has, but we will, it has. The principal's nodding, we've advertised both those positions and we fully intend to fill them.
There you go. Thank you very much. Okay, go on down. Board members, you've had an opportunity to see and read the May 7th and May 13th closing regular session minutes. Anyone like to make a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Mr. Henson's made the motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Say, Mr. Clark? Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have Ms. Belinda Moore. I bet that's the first time I've said Belinda Moore. Very good. Did I say it correctly?
You did.
Okay, good.
Chairman Francis, school board members, Dr. Nolte, Dr. Putnam, Ms. Barker. Um, I bring before you tonight the AIG plan for 2019 through 22. This is a three-year plan. Um, one of the requirements is that it be school board approved for the state. Um, this will go to the state, once you have approved this, it will be submitted, um, to the state. You've had this to view, um, I'll just go over a couple of points for each of it and then I'll ask, answer any questions you may have about the plan. So currently, we have approximately 932 AIG students, about 13% of our students are identified AIG. We, um, get funding based on our ADM and, um, this past year for 17, 18, I'm sorry, 18, 19, we had $390,222 from the state. And we get 7,500 local funding to, um, support our AIG program. Most of that funding goes for our teachers. Um, we have six standards in the AIG plan. Standard one, I'm going to go through some of the changes from the last plan and some things that we've added. Um, for student identification, students can be identified, um, AR which is academic, uh, reading, academically math, um, academically gifted, which means they're both reading and math. IG which is intellectually gifted, they have to have a 90, a composite score of 96 percentile. And then AI which is they're both academically and intellectually gifted. And we use COGAT scores, all of our third grade students take COGAT, but we do COGAT for all our other students. Um, that is one of our assessments we give, they have to have a score of a 92 percentile in one of the sub-scores. And then, um, we use the WOT, also a 92% in the identified area. And, um, something new for our plan this year, um, our AOG scores were 92 percentile and we have, um, moved that to 95 percentile. Um, our data showed that our students aren't qualifying at 92, um, so we needed to up that. We don't want kids to be disappointed. Um, so most of our kids at 95 percentile are qualifying and at 92, they weren't. Um, and then K2 is a minimum of at least a year ahead in their reading. Once they've been identified, then, uh, DEP is created and those are signed yearly by the, um, teachers and the parents. Standard two, the comprehensive program and within a total school community. Uh, we do integrated programs consisting of problem and project-based learning. Um, this year, we, um, are adding talent development in second grade, which was previously called nurture and we had that in K1 and we're adding that in second grade this year. Um, we also, um, something that came out of the committee, um, parent advisory committee for AIG was a need for our teachers. Um, so this year for our new teacher symposium, beginning of the year, teachers will get some additional training, um, in gifted education practices and some resources and strategy for differentiated instruction. We're also, um, this year, we added transition for our sixth grade students. We, um, met with our fifth grade parents here, um, and talked about the transition because fifth grade to sixth grade AIG is very different, so we met with them. And then we're adding eighth grade also because going from eighth grade to ninth grade again is another transition year. So we're adding transition meetings with our parents in this new plan. Also, the state requirement now is any student who scores a level five on math must have an advanced class or differentiated class. And so if they're not in EOG, uh, or sorry, AIG, then we've got to make sure that they get the advanced classes unless the parent opts out. So that's also new, that came from the state. Um, we also started this year and we're going to add to that next year, our partnership with Haywood Early College, the Robathons that we did this year. Um, and then we, um, add AIG summer camp where adding fourth, fifth, and upcoming sixth graders to that. Standard three on differentiated curriculum and instruction. We currently have six full-time AIG specialists for 11 schools. That's our elementary and middle, and we're getting ready to hire a part-time AIG teacher to help with the, um, talent development. Some of the new additions this year, one of our AIG teachers is very good at grant writing and then I had some funds and so we, um, have added a lot of new technology and new, um, things to our program. So they're real excited about that. Some of those include snap circuits, Sphero's, Osmos, uh, coatable drones, zoob kits, um, robotics kits. So trying to get them ready for, you know, 21st century. Um, we also added in our depth of knowledge training, that goes along with our, um, district school improvement team. And, um, we're also trying to add more social and emotional into the curriculum. Standard four, personnel and professional development. Uh, we hired this past year an elementary and middle AIG lead teacher and they just assist me in making sure that information gets given to the other AIG teachers in elementary and middle school. And they assist with the plan, uh, as well. We also recommend clustering our students in regular grades as well as the students who score five on their EOG math. This year, we're very excited, our AP, um, the DPI is providing resources for our AP teachers and we're also, we also have several that, um, are going to go to AP institute this summer. So we're real excited about that. Standard five partnerships, um, we had an AIG advisory team that met, um, twice. They worked on, a lot of these suggestions came from that team and they were comprised of, um, all the grade levels, elementary, middle, and high school parents, um, elementary, middle, and high school administrators, counselors, teachers, uh, AIG specialists, CNI from the central office. So we had a, a really good, um, mix of representation there. Our AIG specialist used Remind to help get word out to our AIG students on different things that are upcoming. And we're revamping the AIG website, working on that, so this new plan will be on there and some new additions to that as well. And we're hoping to expand and add more AP classes over the next three years. And then standard six, program accountability. We're, um, going to do some exit surveys for our students and parents within this next three years. And we hope to increase our, um, underrepresented populations. We're working, um, with our EL teachers and, um, other underrepresented populations to make sure we're not missing any of those. And then the standard six has procedures to resolve disagreement.
Very good.
Y'all have any questions?
I think you covered it pretty well.
Thank you.
Very good.
How does that?
We need to approve this plan so we can move forward. Does anyone have a motion to that effect?
Some of it.
Dr. Rogers has made the motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Say, Mr. Francis, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Board members, we need to approve our attorney to go to his summer law conference at this time. I'd entertain a motion that we approve, Mr. Smathers, to keep up on the cutting edge of all the changes in the law and keep us out of trouble and... Alright. Sounds good.
I'll make a motion to approve to let him go.
Alright. To the conference.
The conference.
Oh, oh, yeah. The conference, I'm sorry.
We have a motion from Mr. Kirkpatrick, that Mr. Smathers gets to go to the summer law conference, not to go. Do I hear a second? Say, Mr. Rogers, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you, Mr. Smathers. It is, it is, and we want you to keep up on what's going on. Ms. Alicia Glantz.
Mr. Francis, members of the board, Dr. Nolte, Dr. Putnam, and Ms. Barker. I'm, uh, presenting the CTE local plan tonight for y'all's approval. We have sent a link to this plan because it is very lengthy. It's close to 100 pages long, it's good bedtime reading.
It crashed my computer today.
Yeah, it may do it. Um, I'm asking for approval tonight, it helps, um, get our funding, our federal funding for our career and technical education classes.
Okay. You want to have any questions from Ms. Glantz?
At this time, I'd like to make a motion, we approve the, uh, DPI plan for CTE.
Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Rogers, do I hear a second?
Second.
Say, Mr. Henson, any question or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Glantz.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have bid approvals by Ms. Allison Francis. I think this was already approved at the finance committee.
To hear me again.
To the board.
Chairman Francis, members of the board, Dr. Nolte, Dr. Putnam, Ms. Barker. I bring before you the mag child nutrition items for board approval. Our milk bid, um, awarded to Dean Foods, an amount of $279,913. They were the only company out of four to return a bid to Haywood County for our milk. They've been our provider for as long as I've been here and probably a lot prior to that as well. And for bid extensions, I would like to request, um, for our food and supplies bid, US Food Service, year three of a possible five-year term. And that's part of the Western North Carolina co-op that we belong in with eight other counties. Uh, our produce bid to Marvin's Produce, uh, year three of a possible five-year term and we are in that bid with Buncombe, Haywood, and Henderson. And then our beverage bid for, uh, year two of a possible five-year term.
Okay.
Do we need to break these up into three or just make them all one?
I'd say we could approve them as, as presented.
I make a motion, we approve the bids as presented.
Do I hear a second to the motion, Mr. Kirkpatrick's made the motion?
I'll second it.
Say, Mr. Clark, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Was the chemical bid in that as well or?
No, that doesn't require approval, it's under the threshold.
Okay.
That was just for your information.
Okay, we'll clarify that.
Alright, any other questions or comments? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Francis. Dr. Putnam. Our policies.
That's one thing I appreciate about this board, it's progressive. Two policies for second reading, one of which is 2230, which would require approval of board agenda prior to the start of the meeting, which this board has already enacted this meeting. So, policy 2230 up for second read as well as 4240 slash 7312, child abuse reports and investigations. If you'll remember, the change there was simply providing information, who do you contact in the event of child abuse? And we made it generic, gave contact information in the event that person changes. So we wouldn't have to revise the policy each time.
Okay. I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we approve a second reading for 2330, 4240s dash 7312 as presented.
Mr. Kirkpatrick made a motion as stated, and I hear a second.
Second.
Say, Mr. Rogers, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Putnam. We have one item from Building and Grounds and, uh, this time we'll recognize Building and Grounds Chair, Dr. Rogers.
Building and Grounds brings forward a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve surplus of two 2003 Chevrolet C2500 trucks. These vehicles are from the maintenance department and have already been replaced. Specifically, that's truck number 7,007 and 7,028.
Okay, we have a motion from Building and Grounds, do I hear a second?
Second.
Say, Mr. Kirkpatrick, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Anything else from the Building and Grounds tonight? None, okay. Alright, now we go over to Mr. Clark, the chair of our finance committee for their business.
Alright, we've got three items, Mr. Chairman. Um, agenda item number 19, the finance committee met earlier this evening and reviewed the monthly financial reports that are noted irregularly found. So I want a motion to approve the monthly financial reports.
We have a motion from Mr. Clark, do I hear a second?
Second.
Say, Mr. Henson, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, this next item is number 20. Uh, we haven't received state and federal appropriations for fiscal year 2019 to 20. So general status 115C dash 434 requires the board to make interim appropriations for the purpose of paying salaries and, uh, usual ordinary expenses for the school system between the beginning of the fiscal year and the adoption of the budget resolution. So I need a motion to approve that.
Okay. Mr. Clark's made a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Say, Mr. Rogers, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? This is standard procedure we do every year until the state gives us our budget, that's basically what we're doing. So we can keep everybody paid. Okay, any other questions or comments? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And my final item is, uh, agenda item 21, the resolution allows Dr. Nolte to approve the budget amendments for the fiscal year and with those amendments being presented at the next regular board meeting for approval. According to our independent auditors, this is an acceptable procedure versus holding a call board meeting on the last day of June. Have done this for the past several years, so I need to motion to allow Dr. Nolte to do this.
Okay, we have, we have a motion from Mr. Clark, say, Mr. Kirkpatrick. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Next, we have Dr. Nolte for our personnel this evening.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff and guests. I'm going to, uh, present to you the personnel that we discussed in closed session earlier. Uh, for your information, we have 19 separations from employment. Uh, we have 12 employee status changes. We have twelve employee status changes or leave of absence for your approval. We have eleven employments, sixty-two status changes, most of which are summer programs and things like that. Twenty-six contracted services, one substitute, forty-three employee coaches getting ready for the fall, twelve non-employee coaches, nine volunteer coaching services, and one-hundred-and-twenty-nine teacher contract renewals.
All right. That's all?
I think so. If I've missed anything, did I miss something, Mr. Francis?
Right off.
Mr. Francis.
He's the bird dog now. If you get it wrong, he lets you know.
That's right.
So he'll get it right. Very good. At this time, we entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve personnel as presented.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Francis. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Say, Mr. Rogers. Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Board. At this time, it is my pleasure to introduce the new elementary supervisor. We did our advertisement some time ago and interviewed qualified candidates, and our clear choice was one of our principals that is an excellent educational leader, has good experience in leading a school to academic success, and was willing to come to the central office and help us with elementary supervision. We're very excited about this individual. We think experience as a principal will be invaluable, plus she's just really nice, and we like nice people. So Ms. Kim Shipman, if you would come up to be recognized, and if you'd like to say anything, you may.
Thank you, Dr. Nolte. Chairman Francis, members of the board, Dr. Nolte, Dr. Putnam, and Ms. Barker. I want to thank you all for your overwhelming support over the years throughout my journey, beginning with a classroom teacher, to lead teacher, to assistant principal, to principal, and now to my next step as elementary supervisor. Throughout this school year, our principal association was fortunate enough to hear many great Haywood County leaders speak about great leadership, and one of those great leaders that spoke to us was Dr. Nolte, so we got to hear from him. When someone spoke, it was said, "Everything that you have done in the past helps you to your next step. It gives you perspective, and if the door opens, walk through it." So now, as I walk through this door as my next step, I want you to know that I'm humbled and I'm honored that you have the faith in me to give me this opportunity. I'm committed to work hard and support our outstanding principals, our lead teachers, our teachers, and ultimately impact our priority, the students of Haywood County. I want to recognize and thank my family. My dad is here tonight, my husband Chad is here tonight, my two kids, Hannah Grace and Hampton. I don't know what I would do without the support of my family, so they always have my back, and I appreciate their support through every transition that I have made in my career. They've stood right beside me, and I appreciate that. I want to thank the amazing staff and students and parents and community at Bethel Elementary School for loving me and taking me in for the past five years of my life. They are my family. My family grew when I went to Bethel, and I love them. It is a very special place that I hold dear to my heart, and I always will. I believe during my time there, they have grown me and made me a better person and a better educator. I've been so blessed to form those relationships at Bethel, and I will cherish them always. I have been in Haywood County all of my life, and I love our school system, and I thank you again for having the faith in me to give me this opportunity for the next step.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as we made the final thoughts administratively about who to recommend for the elementary supervisor, we knew that if Ms. Shipman were approved by you, which you was finished doing a few moments ago, that that would open one of our largest elementary schools. It's actually at a little higher pay grade according to what the state sets, and we also knew that we would need someone to go into that school and to make sure that they had continued excellence. So I've always thought that the next person I'm going to introduce had skills that she maybe wasn't using, and I have talked to her in the past about doing other bigger jobs, and they just never seemed to fit. But I sat down with her and said, "I would really like for you to please go to Bethel Elementary School. It's a little closer to your home. It'll be a fresh rejuvenizing approach for you, and even though you would be leaving a great school, you leave that school in good shape. It's a little smaller for maybe a new principal, and if you would do that, I would appreciate it." And she said that she would do that if I recommended her and you approved her. So I would like to, at this time, to introduce the new principal at Bethel Elementary School, Heather Hollinsworth.
Chairman Francis, members of the board, Dr. Nolte, Dr. Putnam, and Ms. Barker, friends. I am so blessed to have been a Haywood County resident and a Haywood County school student, and just when I look back over the twenty-seven years that I've been in the school system and then, you know, before then, I went to school at Pisgah. I had the opportunity to go to Tuscola and coach and teach for twelve years. I got to go back to Pisgah for six years. Then I got to go to Jonathan Valley for nine. And the neat thing about being at Jonathan Valley is I got to be the principal of a lot of the students that were kids of the kids that I taught when they were in high school, and that has been amazing beyond anything that you can imagine. And now I feel like I get to go back home and maybe finish up my career back home, and I will be blessed again to have the children of the kids that I was their assistant principal when they were in high school. So just a lot of full circle kinds of things. I am leaving a big part of my heart at Jonathan Valley. It is a great place to be, and I promise you that no matter who goes there, they can teach a high school coach how to be an elementary principal. It was not easy, but they did, and they did a great job, and kind of like Kim said a few minutes ago, they led me, and they taught me how to do it. And now I am so excited about going to Bethel, and I appreciate the trust that you all have in me, and I embrace this opportunity and this open door. I'm going to walk through it. I'm going to run through it, actually. And I just want to say thank you to everybody who has helped me along the way. There are so way too many to start naming names, so thank you so much.
Two great ones there. In Jonathan Valley, we will find you another one. I promise. You can train them, too. The last thing I have for tonight, Mr. Chairman and Board, I would like to ask Principal Todd Trantham to come up and introduce his new athletic director.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Nolte, staff and guests, it is my honor and privilege to introduce you to the new athletic director at Tuscola High School tonight. He is a Tuscola High School graduate. He is a, he has spent most of his career as assistant coach with us, and most importantly, he's a Mountaineer at heart. So I'd like to introduce you to Michael Blue, new AD at Tuscola High School.
Thank you, Mr. Trantham. Thank you, Dr. Nolte, Dr. Putnam, Ms. Barker, and the board for this opportunity to serve the great students and the coaches and the staff at Tuscola High School. I'd like to thank God. Without him in my corner, none of this would matter. I'd like to thank my family for always supporting me. It's an honor to be presented with this position. Black and gold are the only colors I've ever worn, and those are the colors I bleed. Tuscola and the Waynesville community have helped to mold me into the man that I am today, and I'm extremely grateful for all that the Hill has poured into me over the last twenty-five years as both a student and a coach. The traditions that I've learned from Tuscola have shaped my desire for discipline and work ethic in my own life, and I'm eager for the chance to pass those qualities on to the next generation of student athletes. I look forward to working with all the teams at Tuscola as one Big T family. I'm excited about putting the athletic teams into action that our community can be proud of, from Fines Creek to Balsam, from Allen's Creek to Maggie, and all the communities that feed into Tuscola. I promise you, we will make you proud. Thank you again. Go Big T.
What do you say after that?
Big T.
All of these promotions are outstanding. Yeah, go Big T. Go Bears.
Go Big T.
Oh, well, you would know that this board is a little bit divided on some of this stuff, but we vote unanimously all the time, but we're divided on that for sure. But no, congratulations to each one of you for your promotion, and you can tell these folks care, and that makes a huge difference, and congratulations to all of them.
We support you, too. Very much so. And thank you so much for what you do. Yeah, it's for this whole county, yeah. We do have a lot of fun with it, so we know y'all do great, and thank you.
Before it gets any worse.
It's been your journey.